Welcome to the Bakersfield City Council Meeting. This television broadcast is brought to you by the local cable companies, the County of Kern, and the City of Bakersfield. You can watch the rebroadcast of this meeting Saturday at 7:00 PM, Sunday at 10:00 AM, and the following Wednesday at 7:00 PM. You can download the agenda for this meeting at www.bakersfieldcity.us. Presiding over this evening's meeting, the Honorable Karen Goh.
Good evening. It's my pleasure to call to order the 5:15 City Council Meeting of June 6, 2018. Madam Clerk, would you please call the role?
Mayor Goh.
Here.
Vice Mayor Smith.
I am here.
Councilmember Rivera. Councilmember Gonzalez.
Here.
Councilmember Weir.
Here.
Councilmember Freeman.
Here.
Councilmember Sullivan. Councilmember Parlier.
Here.
Thank you. Thank you all for being here this evening. It's always a pleasure to have people engage in the civic process, and we're particularly happy to have a number of young people here this evening. Today, we have the pleasure of having Pastor Matt Voorhees from River Lakes Community Church. He's the senior pastor of a church that's vibrant and always reaching out to our community. He's going to offer the invocation. And then we have a special treat that's going to take place after the invocation. We have a group of students from Bakersfield High School -- go drillers -- who will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. But this special, special group, they're members of the BHS Virtual Enterprise Team that won the 2018 national -- that's national -- championship for the Virtual Enterprise International Competition in New York City. This team beat out 550 other business plans from teams across the country. Their name is Anomalous, and they focused on fighting local food waste, one juice at a time, by using products that some would deem inferior and making quality juices. So this is actually the second year that Bakersfield High School has captured the national championship, and we really want to thank their coach, Mr. Riker Solano. Without him, no matter how talented, I don't think this would be happening. But we're so delighted to have three of the six members here today, and we have Elizabeth Hayward. Would you just stand up, Elizabeth, and wave? And then Nicholas O'Tozen. And then our third member Mesa Scott Stanley. And then Mr. Solano, if you would stand up also, and let us just give them a hand. Amazing people. We also want to congratulate their teammates who are unable to be here, Kimberly Marquez, Madeline Rivera, and Margot Cooney. And national champions from Bakersfield, just representing us, and I got to hear their presentation actually at Rotary, and they are incredible young people, and Coach, kudos to you. So at this time, Pastor Matt, if you would lead us and everybody, please stand, and then following that, we'll remain standing for the pledge.
Thank you, Mayor Goh, council members. Let's pray. Our gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for the gathering of these leaders in this City Council Meeting. And we acknowledge, God, that all of this happens under your sovereign direction. Grateful that you've raised up these men and women to lead our city. We pray especially, Lord, that they would benefit from your wisdom and your strength here tonight. We pray you would direct Mayor Goh and each and every council member in the important discussion and decisions that need to be made here. God, we ask that what takes place in this meeting would be for the benefit of this great city, that you would carry out your good kingdom purposes and plans for the people of Bakersfield. And God, we do ask, acknowledging our neediness, our flawedness, our finiteness, just how much we need you to address the many deep concerns and needs in our city, so many things that are heavy on our hearts regarding the needs all around us. And God, we confess that we're incapable in and of ourselves to address those, but we pray that you would continue to pour out your favor and kindness on this people. And we ask that what happens here tonight is part of your addressing those things. And that, God, we ask also that you would continue to be glorified through Jesus Christ and through the church and through the impact that you are having through Him and His body here in this community. And we thank you and pray in His name. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Matt. And now Team Anomalous from Bakersfield High School.
Salute. Pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and you may be seated. Here are a few guidelines to help our meeting run smoothly. We request that you turn off your phones. In keeping with council policy, council members aren't allowed to send or receive electronic communication during the meeting. We ask you to be courteous in the use of your cameras and videos. Applause is allowed during the presentations portion of the meeting, but it isn't allowed during other times of the meeting. For safety reasons and as a courtesy to others, no signs are allowed in the council chambers. Thank you so much for your wonderful cooperation tonight, and we'll have a great meeting. Madam Clerk, please read the first item.
Under Presentations, we have the Mayor's Business Beautification Award.
We were scheduled to have a presentation for a wonderful building that has been beautified, but unfortunately, the owner was not able to be here tonight, and so we are going to reschedule that for a future date. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Public Statements.
At this time, we'll receive public statements. All statements are given a three-minute time limit, 15 minutes per topic. If you have written comments that are longer than your verbal statement, please give those to the clerk, and she'll give copies to the council. Please avoid any behavior that would be disruptive. We're very interested in what you have to say, but due to the public notice requirement of the Brown Act, the council can't take action on an item when it's not on the agenda. The council can, however, refer the matter to committee or request that a staff member follow up. If you're here to speak on hearing item nine or 10, now isn't the time to speak, you'll be given an opportunity later in the meeting. So Madam Clerk, would you please call the first public speaker?
Mayor, we have received four speaker cards this evening, two regarding the Youth Commission and two regarding separate subjects. The first speaker this evening is Curtis Bingham Senior regarding blessings.
Please introduce yourself.
Yes, Honorable Mayor, and to the board. My name is Curtis James Bingham Senior, St. Evangeline's for our Lord and Savior, God Almighty, Jesus Christ, who truly is the only begotten Son of our holy heavenly Father God. And I just would like to bless in this name, thank you guys for having me, God, I trust, because that's where the power is coming from. I also would like to say, Mayor Hall, you know, we're just taking away from us. And sometimes people don't understand just exactly what death really is. He don't do what he done, and when he leave, that's it. It don't work that way. I move my arms like this. If God were to call me right now, my arms would stop. That mean the Spirit would come out of me. And if you got faith and belief in our Lord and Savior, God Almighty, Jesus Christ, He's immediately in the presence of the Lord. So what I'm saying, the mayor is not dead, he's more alive than us. And I'd like to say for the city attorney, pray God bless you and your happening too, so that would pertain to your husband as well. So I want everybody to know, Mayor Hall is not dead. It's an absolute guarantee, he's alive up in the kingdom of heaven. The Bible says, absent from the body means present with the Lord. And Mayor, I also like to say, the Lord put you in office for a perfect time as this. Matthew 12:50, the Bible says, those that believe in Him, He called them mothering, brothering, and sistering. You would have mothering on the top of your head as mayor, because you know, sometimes women have this special touch, and the whole city know who the mayor was. And so now we got a new one in, and you're doing such excellent job that when you're bringing the love that you're bringing, it just make people feel even better, which you've been a female in office at this time, and the Lord know what you was doing. Then I also like to say, I pray everybody remember here, this world will end because of evil. Now, I didn't write it, you didn't write it, it's written before we was born, evil. See, it's evil running everywhere. The Bible say, if he don't cut the time short, no flesh will be saved. You see, this evil is running rampant. So what I'm saying now, if the world went black right now, the only thing that would shine as a light would be the word of God and law enforcement. Law enforcement is a restrainer. The Bible says the Antichrist ain't coming in the Bible yet, because the restrain is in the way. So the Lord is your law enforcement, as the restrain, they restraining this evil. So I'm just saying, when law enforcement have a need, new vehicles, motorcycles, whatever it is that the chief is asking for, it's a grand time for everybody to be so happy to say, we can help them out. Because when I go to sleep at night, I'm not scary, but I do know 911 is there for me, and it's there for you too, and we ain't gonna go, they gonna be the ones to go. So I pray you bless the chief and his staff, or whatever he's asking for to keep things going, because they ain't asking for nothing for themselves, they trying to take care of us in the public. And I just want everybody here to just recognize what the Lord said, it's not gonna get any better. We want it to, but you see this evil going on. Ten-year-old girl yesterday got towed up by a guy stealing her cellphone, hit the news yesterday. This evil is running rampant, they shooting now. Yeah, everybody got a gun for some reason, you know, and so it's getting real vicious out there, so let's honor law enforcement like we supposed to. The Lord put them here as restrainers, and you know they say it's fire season. What a shame. What a shame to know we got people, it's time to start fires, so that's why we respect our fire department as well. So I'm just here just to say, let's bless our law enforcement, as we should. And Mayor, thank you for going around sharing all this love that you do each and every day. The Lord said, be careful who you entertain, because some entertain angels unaware, and you got one up there, Councilman Sullivan. Thank you in the name of Jesus, amen.
Thank you, Mr. Bingham. Thank you. Madam Clerk, next speaker, please.
Luke Garcia regarding the Youth Commission.
So we actually have a team here from our Bakersfield Youth Commission, and how wonderful it is to have young people represent our city and share their ideas. We have the Chair, Luke Garcia, from a recent graduate from South High, Go Rebels, Tate Turner, a rising senior at Bakersfield High, and Elise Honaker, are you here? No, Elise is not here, a graduate from Liberty High, Lauren Carter, a graduate from Bakersfield Christian, Jessica Flores, Jessica's here, a recent graduate from Independence High, and the Mayor's appointee, Annika Paterno, a rising star at Stockdale High School. And we have a couple of vacancies, so go ahead.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Luke Garcia. I am the Commissioner of Ward One and the Chairman of the City Council Youth Commission. On behalf of the Youth Commission, we would like to thank the Honorable Mayor Goh and the council for having us here to present our PSA that the Youth Commission starred and filmed in with the help of the Bakersfield media team that did all the editing. But with school coming out and kids having loads of free time, vandalism will become a problem. And we're not saying it's not already a problem now, because it is big. And with the help of Bakersfield Parks and Rec, the Youth Commission was able to acknowledge the problem early and create a PSA that is in hopes of informing citizens and informing everyone in Bakersfield the causes of vandalism and the effects it has on the city, not just that area. So today, we're here to present our PSA on vandalism to the council.
Thank you very much. We look forward to seeing it.
We are the Bakersfield City Youth Commission.
Hey, have you noticed vandalism in our parks?
Vandalism in our parks? It's more likely than you think.
Vandalism happens every day, and it can happen in any part of the city.
Repairs range from $5,000 to $10,000 monthly on average.
Imagine what parks could be like if park staff didn't have to spend time fixing this issue.
If you see any vandalism in the parks, call this number and report it to the Bakersfield Police Department.
Or you can always report it using the Bakersfield mobile app.
We challenge you, keep our parks safe and clean.
Thank you very much. We'll give them a hand. Mr. Turner, would you like to speak?
Yeah, so if that did not make you smile like it did me, I don't know what will. So Mayor, council members, I would like to thank you for appointing us to the Youth Commission. So this is a video that we put together after Ms. Hoover approached us from Parks and Rec about addressing the issue of vandalism in our parks and in our streetscapes. And so this is kind of what we came up with in an hour, and with a couple pictures and videos and some audio, so that's what we got. And a part of the Youth Commission, we are looking for more members as well, so we are recruiting to make more PSAs and get our name out there, make us a little bit more distinguished. So that is it for us. Thank you very much.
Youth Commission, thank you so much for being here. Their terms are ending in July 2018, and we are currently recruiting for the next term. It's a two-year term. So if you are interested, young people, applications are online, and they're due June the 20th. So would you recommend being on the Youth Commission?
Absolutely.
Thank you very much. Thank you for sharing with us today.
Thank you.
Okay, and now we have Councilmember Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mayor Goh. I just want to thank the Youth Commissioners. Before you step out and leave, wanted to thank all of you for your hard work on this particular item. Vandalism in many of the parks in Ward Two is a real issue, and I'll be happy to share this with my constituents and via social media so that we can get the word out this summer. So thank you so much for the helpful resource. I'm really excited about the Youth Commission, and I want to thank Councilman Rivera, who devised this idea. I remember being in high school, I was part of the Mayor's Youth Council with Mayor Bob Price, and had an opportunity to work with him very closely. And just a few years later, now I'm on the council. How about that? So congratulations to the Youth Council. Thank you for all you do.
Councilmember Rivera.
So the closest I have to children in my life are my dog, my puppy, whose name is Ellie, and the members of the Bakersfield Youth Commission. I am so damn proud of you guys. I get all giddy up here, seriously. I was overwhelmed with excitement and happiness to hear from you guys and see that you guys are, one, making your voices heard and representing youth in this community. I think that was really the goal of this whole idea when the council instituted it. I'm glad you guys are there. I want to thank my Commissioner and our Chair, who I think has done the best he could in what is really a very young and very new thing for the city of Bakersfield. But I know that there are great things to come, and I think you guys are trailblazers and really setting the bar high for the folks that will follow you. So congratulations, thank you so much for what you do, and thanks for, I guess, for making me look good, and making us all look good. Great job.
Thank you, Youth Commission. Madam Clerk, next public speaker, please.
Debra Moore, pro-life statement.
Please introduce yourself.
My name is Debra Moore. We concern ourselves with the quality of life in Bakersfield, but what about the quality of life of the most innocent and the most defenseless? I'm talking about the tiny little baby in the womb. Currently, abortionists take a sharpened forcep and rip the baby out piece by piece. We cannot ignore this because the Bible says thou shalt not kill. We cannot ignore this because God came to the people of Monarch, and He said, I hold this one thing against you, that you have child sacrifice. And that's what this is, this is child sacrifice. The pompous brought before the City Council the human life ordinance. It was tabled. I'm asking you not to consider it and to consider stopping abortion in this town. I don't know that we'll be considered guiltless if we do nothing. Thank you for your consideration.
Ms. Moore, thank you for your comments. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Under Workshops, Item A, Revenue Enhancement Outreach Update and Recommendation.
Mr. Tandy.
Honorable Mayor and members of City Council, I was asked a question this afternoon. Is there a relationship between the $50 million that Congressman McCarthy announced we were to receive today, or the $169 million total that has been awarded to the city of Bakersfield in the TRIP program over the last three months? And the answer is no. It's all dedicated to specific segments of highway construction. Councilmember Sullivan, is that the plug you wanted?
Well done. Thank you.
Thank you. Honorable Mayor and members of City Council, seriously, brief history, you all as a body asked the staff to prepare multi-year budget projections. We did. Those budget projections showed that we are entering into a period when the services that we are able to afford our citizens with the current revenue streams will not be adequate to their needs. The council then authorized some polling work to be done to see if there was a potential receptiveness on the part of the constituents for sales tax increase. That was generally a positive response. Then most recently, the council authorized and directed staff to go out into the community to do outreach, to make presentations, educational in nature to the citizens, to bring back feedback. I won't read all of the places that we either have visited or will soon be visiting. There were council members with us at nearly all of these, and quite a number of members of the council have attended one or more sessions. There are some common themes that have been realized as a result of these visitations. First, the inverse pyramid is supposed to reflect spending priorities with, were originally reflective of the community polling. Maintaining and enhancing public safety is clearly the top priority. Addressing fiscal stability is in the middle, and then quality of life issues, including homelessness concerns, is present and significant. Among the commentary received at these presentations was accountability. People, citizens, taxpayers want to be assured that what we say we will spend the money on is in fact what the money gets spent on. And so to that end, constituent groups have asked for an oversight committee who would serve in an advisory capacity to advise the City Council on the question of whether or not spending priorities are being developed and enhanced in accordance with the prioritizations you will see tonight, or that ultimately will appear on the ballot issue if the item gets the ballot. And having an accounting system which can produce an auditable record of every dollar expended, so that citizens who are curious, skeptical, whatever, can go to our online open budget platform and read each month what all the monies from the new revenue source would be spent on. And we're more than receptive to those ideas. There was also a desire to have the Oversight Committee review the goals that would relate to those spending priorities. Some of the other common issues, or surprises, or significant information that was consistent across groups, were that probably the best job the staff has ever done at assembling comparative information about Bakersfield's expenses compared to those of others, Bakersfield's staffing levels compared to others, Bakersfield's taxation level compared to others, was assembled, developed over time as a result of comments. They'd go out to one group, and they'd say, well, what about this? What about that? So we'd add a segment. But they, we got a general consensus that people were surprised at how low our law enforcement level staffing and expenditures are in comparison to other municipalities that would be comparable to Bakersfield. A number of people have shared responses, stories about Part II and III crimes, and the fact that they weren't left with a good feeling when they came home and their place was burglarized, and we have a service that helps them fill out an online reporting form, which wasn't enhancement over what we had for a while. But they really want to see a police officer. Their car is stolen, vandalized, their home burglarized. They really want to see a police officer, be able to ask questions, express their concerns, ask about the solvency of the case, those kinds of things. Homelessness is a huge and growing concern, becoming consuming to the staff and in our outreach programs. When we mentioned this at the Association of Realtors, about 20 hands went up, with people wanting to tell their personal story about how their properties or their listings or their circumstances were negatively impacted by the homeless population, which is growing rather dramatically. There were a number of groups, people, that expressed interest in economic development promotion. When the state took away redevelopment from the city, we lost almost all of our economic development staff because of the overall economic circumstances. We've not been able to replace it. And it is logical, when addressing a question of a tax increase, to say we'll grow the pie. And so we agree with that, and economic development promotion should certainly be on the list of things funded. Overall, I think the outreach efforts have resulted in a general confirmation or affirmation of the prioritization of concerns that were discovered and outlined as the high priorities in the polling effort. Chris Huat is going to go through the next several slides, and then I'm going to come back on at the end. Thank you.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. Chris Huat, City Manager's Office. Some of the factors that we considered when discussing this potential revenue enhancement with community groups included some of the stats that are before you, some that you've seen, and some that we added over time with additional research. When you look at our law enforcement staffing here in the city of Bakersfield, when you compare it to the top 20 cities in California excluding San Francisco and Los Angeles, the city has about 30% fewer law enforcement staff. When you, when that translates to a per-shift number, working with the police department, we determine that there's about 50 sworn staff, from patrol officers up, that are on shift in any one given time, covering 150 square miles and 387,000 residents. So when there is a large traffic incident or some other type of issue that takes several resources, it reduces that number that then is available to respond to the remainder of the city for that period of time. For the last year that we have full data available, the city of Bakersfield ranked third in the nation in vehicle thefts, and we have about a 55% greater property crime rate than those top 20 cities in California. Another statistic that we have identified that is not where we want it to be is the number of calls that our dispatchers take in the police department on an average year, which is 24,000. That is well above comparable cities and not where we want it to be. And as Alan mentioned, homelessness continues to be an issue in the community, and we've seen, as you heard several meetings ago, a 46% increase year over year in the number of unsheltered homeless individuals within the city of Bakersfield. A few other items, as you know, and we've talked about previously, we've seen a 57% increase in the population over the last 18 years. In that same timeframe, we've seen a 32% increase in the area in which the city is providing services. As of 2013, when a national study was done by the Washington Examiner, the city of Bakersfield ranked last in the number of employees to population out of 107 cities with a population greater than 200,000. Street miles and park acreage over that same time period Street miles and park acreage over that same time period has increased by 82% and 97%, respectively. And finally, our fire department is doing similarly to what our police department is doing, is responding to several more calls, in their case, 52% more calls over the last 10 years. And the fire department's actually doing that with less staff than they had 10 years ago. So, as you recall, in December, this council approved an agreement with FM3 to do community outreach and surveying in regards to this topic. The initial results came back that 65% of the respondents indicated support for a measure that would invest into programs and services to address priority issues such as gang and youth violence, homelessness, crime in general. Property crime specifically, jobs and unemployment was another top one. There were several other categories that ranked in importance to those that responded to the survey. The city of Bakersfield's not the only jurisdiction that is considering this. In fact, 93% of residents in California live in a community where voters have chosen to approve sales tax measures for local government services. The cities that we have here listed are, is just a snippet of what we have found in other cities as far as sales tax rates are concerned. What we're showing are primarily the larger cities in the Central Valley that have approved sales tax measures, above and beyond the state base rate of 7.25%. So, you'll see cities such as Arvin, Wasco, Delano, and Ridgecrest have a one-cent sales tax approved by their voters. You'll see Porterville is the same. Up the road in Visalia, they're at 8.5%. And Stockton's at 9%. But the city of Bakersfield in this list, as well as the top 20 largest cities in California, is the only city that is utilizing that state base rate of 7.25%. A little bit more detail about the proposal that's before you. We are proposing a one-cent sales tax, a general sales tax measure. Sales tax measures are the most common type of local revenue measure throughout the state of California. In this case, it would add 20 cents to a $20 purchase. That would generate about $50 million annually. That revenue would remain local in its entirety. It does not go to Sacramento. Visitors pay sales tax, and you heard from Mr. Lyman earlier this week that we're seeing an increase in the number of visitors to the city, much as when you go to the Central Coast, or to Los Angeles, or the Bay Area, you're likely, if you're buying goods that are taxable, paying a sales tax above the base rate that goes back to the local jurisdiction to provide services for their local residents. So, that same process would happen under this scenario. And then, several items, as you may know, are exempt from sales tax regardless of whether it's a state base rate or any sort of additional voter-approved measure. Those include groceries, prescription medicine, healthcare items. There are several other categories. Finally, oversight and accountability, as Alan mentioned, are paramount in this discussion, and we believe we have a very robust plan in place, as proposed, to ensure that the spending priorities are prioritized. So, a little bit about those priorities. The goal, this is a brief but encompassing list of the areas that we'd like to address with this proposal. First and foremost is to increase police staffing, to improve those response times, to reduce crime, and increase neighborhood proactive police patrols. We'd like to investigate and proactively address property crime and vehicle thefts to reduce those rates that we shared earlier. Like to strengthen both the special enforcement unit and enhance the school resource officer program. We'd like to, with the fire department, ensure that we can, over the next several years, maintain a fully-staffed and equipped Class II-rated fire department. As the city grows, it's paramount to keep that Class II rating. It does have impact on insurance rates that local residents pay. Homelessness is obviously a significant issue. There are several concepts and ideas that we do have to address that with utilizing our local partners, many of, again, many of them who are before you just a couple meetings ago. That includes outreach and shelter capacity discussions, as well as construction of affordable housing, which is greatly needed in the community and a pillar of solving the homelessness issue. Addressing the fiscal stability of the city comes in two forms. First and foremost, it comes through economic development, as Alan mentioned, looking to retain and attract businesses and developing the workforce throughout the community to diversify the economy and expand the pie. Additionally, the discussion has been to establish a trust similar to what we do with our retirement healthcare trust, to place money essentially for a rainy day, locally controlled by the council, to mitigate future swings in PERS rates, as well as the ability to potentially save up to $800,000 annually by how we pay PERS. Additionally, we'd like to enhance neighborhood through additional code enforcement and park maintenance, again, to ensure the vibrancy of the neighborhoods and the communities. With that, I'm going to turn it back over to Alan to discuss the recommendation for this evening. Thank you.
I was surprised by the results of the polling firm's work, and because I would have thought that there was a kind of a 25% base opposition across the board. My assumption prior to receiving the polling information would have been that that number was higher. I asked them why that was, and they said, "There is a pervasive sense of apprehension about public safety issues in the community. Part is a broader issue, because it isn't just Bakersfield, it's other places as well." I think we got a similar sense of that in our visitations and the feedback we received from our visitations. Some of the organizations that we presented to are contemplating endorsing, or perhaps opposing, this measure. I presume this item, if it returns to your agenda of June 20th, we will hear from them about their decisions in that regard. I want to make something abundantly clear. In most of our presentations, somebody said they had never voted for a tax increase in their lives, although some said they were thinking about it in this instance. And we understand that. We're not asking you to. There is no request by staff for you to vote for a tax increase. What we are bringing back to you this evening is, between the polling effort and the community outreach and visitations, we believe there is a sense of concern on the part of your constituents, and we are suggesting that you let them make the decision. Those who have never voted on a tax increase, or never will, can do so. We're not asking you to do it. We're just saying, give the voters the opportunity to validate whether or not these concerns are real or not. So, with that, we're asking you to instruct the city attorney and staff to prepare documents that would be returned to your June 20th agenda, which would, if voted upon affirmatively by 2/3rd margin of all the members of the body, place this item on the ballot so that your constituents have a decision that they can make. Thank you. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Tandy. Mr. Hewat. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I've went on many of these visitations to the community groups, and the feedback is the same, and it's the same I get from my constituents all the time. Public safety is a concern, and it's a growing concern. The homelessness situation is a growing concern. The ability for us to maintain our parks and the general quality of life, there is a general sense that it is deteriorating in Bakersfield. I believe staff and the council has been physically prudent in the past, and I think we've shown that we are efficient. And I think to give the voters a choice at this point of what is clearly to future paths makes sense. So, I will move staff's recommendation to direct the city attorney to prepare documents for a ballot initiative.
Councilmember Freeman.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Mr. Tandy and staff, for pulling these numbers together. I think staff has done actually a great job of pulling all this data together, so maybe we didn't know how bad it was, but so we could at least see facts. And then, they revise them constantly with community input, with council input, to address issues, to answer questions, to clarify. So, we have a pretty good handle now on our fiscal situation. I think, you know, our fiscal situation isn't anybody's fault. We had a terrible recession. We pretty much climbed out of that, but we pump fewer barrels of oil every year. I mean, I'm not an oil guy, but I read the papers and the charts, and for 20 years, fewer and fewer and fewer. That trend isn't estimated to change. So, it's going to come a point, it may not be that far from now, even with prices going up, when tax revenue from oil and property values is going to level off, and then it's going to start a slow decline. That has carried this community for 100 years. We've had a change with internet sales. Internet sales are definitely taking away from our sales base. When it goes to the internet, which is increasing every day, and I don't think there's anyone in the room who would say, "No, next year, they're going to have fewer sales on the internet." No, they're going to have more, more. I do it myself. The society is changing. Well, now, when we used to get a, from the county, when we used to get our sales when it was locally generated, we got the entire thing. The state now has said that any resident, they may buy it in the city, but who now lives in the county and would have bought it in the city, they capture those and they return, we get about half back. The county has a little bit of windfall going, because the other half is going to the county. But you've seen our sales tax revenue is down $7, $8 million, when it should have been growing. It's down from where it was years ago. That trend is going to continue. So, our two sources of revenue, the only two to run the city, are going to be decreasing, or maybe with inflation, just creeping up. That's why we don't trim our trees and our parkways anymore, whatever, four times a year. We used to, probably down to two. We increase our parkways and roads by, we add, I don't know, 1,000 to 1,500 homes a year, hundreds of acres of new parkways, roads, parks, and with residents, what, 5,000-plus a year? Well, there's a tenant, there's a certain amount of crime that comes with that, so there's need for first responders with that. But we have been unable to generate tax revenue to provide for those services. We learned through this process that we've been effectively on virtually hiring freeze for five years. So, every year, we'll add 5,000, 6,000 new residents. Of course, there's going to be some crime. We have no more people to take care of. We can't, we, you know, we, we said, "Well, let's do it." I told a lot of people, "So, let's just get more efficient." I said, "Well, I'm a company." I remember getting more efficient. But when we've discovered, we spend less per person on public services, we're a 107 out of the 107 largest cities in the United States. We're the leanest city in the United States. I mean, I'm sure we could get better, but I don't think we're getting a lot out of that, saying, "Work a little harder," when we've been adding all of these demands on people with no more people for three to five years. So, you know, I think we have a, I think the community has a decision to make. I agree with Councilman Smith. We'll have to redefine the level of public service and quality of life we want, and that should be the people's decision. The council should not make up their mind. I think this is kind of a power-to-the-people moment, as we used to say in the '60s. Let the people decide. Let them choose what level of service they want, what kind of community they want, and kind of respect the process. I'm going to respect whatever the decision is, and we'll deal with it, and we'll respect it, and let the democracy work. But I'd have a hard time denying the people their voice, saying, "No, they should not be given a choice. They should not be able to determine their own destiny." I don't think politicians should determine it for them. I think they should determine it with their vote, and then we live with the vote and we respect it. So, I will second the motion to allow this process to move forward, to go to the people for a decision. Thank you.
Councilmember Weir.
Thank you, Mayor. One point I want to bring up, and I just noticed it tonight as we're going through the PowerPoints and in staff's recommendation. The motion that Councilmember Smith, the Vice Mayor Smith, made is for a one-cent general sales tax increase, is not for a one-per-cent general sales tax increase. In all the slides and everything I've seen tonight, it talks about a one-cent. Does that need to be corrected? Because I don't think we're doing this for a penny.
Councilmember Weir, it is one cent on a dollar sale. If there's a sense that it isn't worded properly, we can sure take a look at that. I haven't heard that previously, but...
Well, I just noticed it tonight. Wouldn't it be more clear if it was a percent? Well, it would be to me, anyway. I appreciate everybody's comments tonight, and I appreciate the situation the city's There are definite needs in the city, and most of those needs can only be provided if there's more discretionary money in the general fund, whatever way that is. And I agree, the voters should have the choice. They should be fully informed, and they should be able to make an intelligent, informed Where I disagree with is that we are providing the information for them to make that informed decision, because I do not believe the ballot, the ballot language is going to provide full disclosure. And over a period of years, it is clear in our current projections that a lot of this money is going to have to go to PERS for bills that are already on the way. That is unfortunate, but that's the situation that we're in. And I know that that is not popular. Mr. Tandy and I have gone around and around in this several times, even this afternoon. But in good conscience, in good conscience, I don't think that we should put a measure on the ballot that, for me, does not represent full disclosure of where the money's going. We need, we need these things to happen in our city, but we need our taxpayers to make a totally informed decision. And without that, we're going to lose some credibility, and I don't want to lose that. Thanks.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Thank you, Mayor. Very good point, Ken. Very well put, Bruce. Excellent information from our city, Alan. But how do you respond to what Ken has just brought up? How is, you know, and then he went on to say, "That is, but that is the situation we're in." You know, PERS is, is a, an undeniable issue, an undeniable problem, and that is something that we, that is on the backs of cities, and we need the, you know, the money has to come from somewhere. And it does, does it end up coming from the general fund? And will it continue to? And then, how do you respond to what Ken has just said?
Councilmember Sullivan, in order to enhance public safety, we need police officers, as well as civilians, and each carries with it a percentage of payroll retirement rate. I think they're 42 and 18%, if that isn't precise, it's in that ballpark. And it's required, just as every employee has costs for health insurance, for unemployment insurance. There are six or seven benefits, which, which accompany the higher of every employee. So, in order to enhance public safety, will there be money that goes to PERS? Yes, and it's more money than go to the other deductibles that are an overhead cost of doing business. We have spoken openly at our presentations about PERS as being a real problem. I have said at many of them that my personal recommendation about what needs to be done is that the composition of the... is that the composition of the board of the organization needs to be changed so that it represents business and economic interests more heavily than union appointments.
Now, what, what, what board? Make that clear.
The board that governs the KALPERS. I believe that, given their current methodology, their primary interest is in maintaining benefits, not in maintaining affordable coverage for their members. So we haven't hidden it, we haven't tried to bury it, we've admitted that it's a problem. I don't know how that can be incorporated in the ballot language in a manner which doesn't distract from the goal of enhancing public safety. So I can't fully address Councilmember Weir's concerns. But I, I, I do think we've been open about it and have discussed it with people at virtually every meeting.
And the key word that you said, in getting more employees, enhancing our level of public safety, those expenses are required. They come along with, you know, it's benefit to the, to the employee that we need, that we need more of, but it, it, but, and those expenses are required.
Correct.
So, like Ken said, that's the situation that we're in. We can't deny or withdraw the, the, the benefits that go along with our employees. So, you know, again, that's, and, and not being sarcastic to, to Ken in any way, but in truth, of course, that's the situation that we're in. So, you know, and then I think it's going to be up to the two sides. There will end up being the, 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 the city's position explaining and continuing to explain and justify why this is so necessary for our city to continue and to go to the level that we want our public safety and our, our, our parks and recreation and everything that we, we need for our standard of living. And then there will be this, the side that is opposing the need for these, for these extra employees. And so it's going to be up to the two sides to convince the voters their, their, each of their positions. So, and it was very interesting how the record shows that there is a 57% increase in our, in our population since year 2000. And then it, it shows the level of employment, and it was interesting, I believe, at the budget meeting, Diane Hoover, our Recreation and Parks Director, how she, we, we, we are aware of how the boundaries of our city has grown, which of course includes more green space, more parks, our beautiful, our beautiful Riverwalk downtown, our, you know, all that we have improved, green space, of course, is, is an important part of, of our city. But, and, and we're doing this extra work with the same number of employees, can't continue, it just can't continue. So we will continue to grow, but 57% since year 2000. That, that is, that is very interesting, very needed information. So I think, I think this is an issue that the community, and, and I think it's Bruce that said, community will need to decide, and it'll be up to the, the, the two positions to, to help the community make up their own mind. So what we are doing, we are giving the community the opportunity to decide for themselves, either to ignore the city's very strong position, and we, we have figures and number of employees to back up the city's position, and then we have, we'll have the other side. So, and, you know, like it was said again, this is the situation that we're in. And I'm going to be going over the figures again. What graph was it, Alan, that showed Bakersfield having the lowest is at the tax rate that we, that we have right now? Yeah, thank you, Chris.
I believe we have several slides. One was a survey that Washington Newspaper. Chris, you can take it from there.
Honorable Mayor, Councilmember Sullivan, is this the slide that you're referring to, showing the sales tax in the different communities? So what this is showing is the effective sales tax rate in these different communities, and what we show here is the, a lot of the large cities in the Central Valley, and what it's showing is anything above 7 and 1/4% means the voters in those communities approved one or more sales tax measures to support local government services. So you'll see like in Arvin, Wasco, Delano, and Richcrest, and Kern County, for example, they all have a 1%, 1 cent sales tax approved. Where's the city of Bakersfield, at the 7 and 1/4%? That's the state, that's the rate that the state assigns. It's essentially the, the minimum sales tax rate statewide.
Yeah, well, the, these are figures that we, you know, that we don't want to deny. These are the figures. So appreciate all the work, because this is the comparison that, that we, as a council, need to, to have available to us, and then certainly the community and the voters. So, and, and always before, Alan, our city has had a, a fund put to one side in advance for the, the, the benefits for our, for our employees. We haven't been able to continue doing that, and I know you were just very, hated not being able to continue putting money away every year, but we haven't been able to do that. So all of this needs to be taken into account, and it is what it is, and, and so we've needed this information. And I, I know you'll continue to, you know, make this available, these, the facts, and make it available to our, you know, to our, our taxpayers, all of our, all of we taxpayers. So thank you for the good work, and, and certainly it's something that our community needs to decide for themselves. Thank you.
Councilmember Rivera.
Thank you, Mayor. So I have a few questions that really stem from Councilmember Weir's comments. I guess the first one is, it, it doesn't seem to me that there's anything, at least it's, and I know we haven't looked at actual initiative language yet, but it doesn't seem to me that there's language stipulating specific purposes for, for the dollars raised, should it pass. Is that correct?
Councilmember Rivera, I sometimes give long answers to what seem like simple questions, so with advance apologies for doing that. The ballot language itself is only 75 words, so it, it would address the public safety issue, the homelessness issue, in very clipped ways. There's supportive information, including a resolution and an ordinance that accompany it, which allow for a more detailed articulation of the prioritizations that the ballot measure will address. And those were essentially the items that Mr. Hewitt put up towards the end of his presentation discussing priorities.
But, but they're, but they're that, they're just, they're priorities, they're not...
They're, they're priorities because we're seeking an election that would represent a 50% one majority, which in California is called a general tax. We are reluctant to put specific and precise dollar amounts on each service module, because Bakersfield tends to be a litigious community, and we think there is the potential that anti-tax interests would sue us to try to force it to be a 2/3 majority tax.
Okay, so the long, but the, the short, the short of it is, there's nothing tying this body's hands, should the initiative pass, to spend this increased revenue on any one
Excuse me, the city attorney is reminding me that after, assuming the measure passes, the next day, there can be a resolution articulating in great, in specific detail, an expenditure plan by service module and, and direct monetary value.
Okay, but that's not a, that's not exactly a component, then, of what's being presented to the voters.
Correct.
So, I mean, the reason I'm asking is, you know, I guess in response to Councilmember Weir's comments, it seems to me, and, and I have maybe some suggestions and maybe some questions on, on how we might do this better, but it seems to me the public will have a great amount of input on what we do with increased revenue, should we start realizing increased revenue. So I, I don't know that, I'm not sure I'm, I'm hearing that we're committing now to spending it on any, on any one thing. And I, I actually think, and I think it would behoove this body to, to figure out how to do this, and maybe in a very 20, I know I've suggested this, but in a 21st century idea that maybe allowed the city to then play a more active role in, in our budgeting, and perhaps in, in this increased revenue, in, in helping us decide how we prioritize that and where we send it. So I know we've done a survey, it'll be a, it'll be a year old, in a year, and, and I, I think, I think it might give the city of Bakersfield and taxpayers a unique opportunity to play an active role in, in where they want to see that, those dollars spent. So it's one thing to suggest that we want it in public safety or on parks, it's another thing to, I think, go back out to them with, with real dollars and present to them what we can actually make happen and what we can do with it. So, you know, I, I like this idea of, of somehow, you know, utilizing either social media or the internet in some way, to maybe as a component of, of our decision-making and our prioritization post-passage, should that occur, you know, to have, have those, have that opinion of, of taxpayers kind of play a, play a role in how we prioritize The, the initiative will include, so I guess in tandem to that, the initiative language includes language for a citizen advisory board, correct? I, I heard that.
Yes, it will.
Okay, could you tell me a little bit about how, how that works? Do we appoint that citizen advisory committee?
Yes, the concept currently, and it is, I will say this, some community organizations gave us one plan, and another community organization gave us another plan. So we've been having meetings with both, seeing if we can come to an accord on the exact nature of the plan. I think where it is today, subject to future consideration by the city council, is that you would solicit nominees from community organizations, such as the Chamber, such as Kern Tax, Association of Realtors, whomever you wished, and there would be a membership, perhaps nine, and there would be an articulation that within that membership, the goal was to have business experience, business ownership, diversity in race, gender, and ethnicity, and a group who could provide a business backing and business input relative to needs and priorities.
And simply advising, though, not necessarily binding the...
Advising you both on spending priorities, and then monitoring our budget platform and an auditable report that would be done each year to show how every dollar was spent, and, and literally comparing it to the ballot measure or the resolution that would be adopted by city council after passage, and saying, yes, this corresponds, or why don't you do more of that? Yes, giving you advice, as the planning commission does.
So, yeah, I, I think, I think we have really neat, unique opportunities, really engage the public, should this pass, and, and I'd be all in favor of pushing that decision as much as possible out to them. If, if, if they're going to pony up more at a store, then I think they should get to, they should get to decide on what we probably, what we spend it on. And I think that goes for what, what the city receives now in revenue, but, but certainly whatever we stand to receive in the future. I guess the only other point I'd make is, and I've, I know I've, I've made this point now for a few months, and that is, I've, I've heard my colleagues say that, you know, really, this is, this is an issue and a matter of pushing the decision out to the voters, and I would completely agree. But we've, this has now spanned several months. So we've now, we saw a long list of folks we've met with. We still aren't making an exact decision this evening to, to actually send something to the ballot, and I think that's what needs to happen. And I think once that happens, I really think the most appropriate thing for everyone up here and for the city to do, and I'm assuming that this is a requirement, is for us to then back away. And if there is a will and a need and an interest on the part of the community and the folks that we've met with and others who might stand to benefit from something like a revenue, revenue enhancement at the city, then they need to put their money where their mouth is, and, and they need to carry the baton and get it done in November. I do not think it's an appropriate use of, of, of our resources and of the taxpayers' resources to do anything further than what we have already done. So I'm in favor of sending to the ballot, stepping away, having my own opinions, casting my ballot in November, and moving on. Thank you.
Councilmember Weir.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I thought I had put my position out with clarity, but apparently I was wrong. So even I know that if we hire 100 more police officers, that we are going to pay their benefits. We're hiring with the money, we're going to pay their benefits with the money, it's not a problem. Here's, here's what I'm trying to convey. In our next fiscal year budget, KALPERS goes up $5 million. In the following year, it goes up another $5 million. In the following year, it goes up another $5 million. So over the projections that we've seen and staff has provided, KALPERS is going to go up about $28 million in the next seven years. Over that same period of time, in the projections we received, our revenue is going up $12 Where's the rest of that money coming from? You're welcome to answer.
Can I give you an idealized answer?
An answer however you choose.
We do have revenue growth and certain other revenues to the city. Property tax is kind of like the tortoise. It, it crawls along and gets higher, not, but not at a, an extreme escalation rate. While the transit occupancy tax is not a general fund revenue, it does help pay for the capital outlays necessary to maintain general fund assets, and it's going up, and we just have a proposed budget before you, which would put more money into the convention and visitors, excuse me, now visit Bakersfield, excuse me, I'm using the old reference. And I, I would hope that the investment in economic development promotion that this item contains will help us do things, such as we were doing with redevelopment, when we facilitated the Padre Hotel through, through obtaining a federal grant to purchase their FFNA, and then having that amortized, and they pay us back, and we pay the feds back, such as we did with the Myas cinemas, which draws 900,000 people a year, such as we did with the seven housing complexes in the federal courthouse along Mill Creek. And all of those things were available in the past, and all of them did promote the economic vitality of the city and, and the generation of the tax base. So to a degree, we hope to achieve part of it through those efforts.
Okay, well, I appreciate that, and I hope you can. But just based on the numbers that were given to me by staff, and to all of us by staff, those were the projections. And my question is, where is that money coming from? And if it's going to come from the sales tax issue, I think we should disclose that. Thank you.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mayor. I support the motion made by Vice Mayor Smith. As I hear from various constituents throughout my ward, I hear about burglaries, homelessness, traffic speeders, the decaying parks... traffic speeders, the decaying parks. Although parks and rec, do respond to many of my requests, there are still always issues, vehicle thefts and break-ins, but it's a daily occurrence that I receive a call, at least a call, from a constituent. And working with city staff has been wonderful, but I understand the constraints. I understand PERS is an issue and a growing issue. The health insurance rates increase, workers' comp increase, there are other expenses in the city that will increase by 2% every year. There are expenses that continue to grow, and those constraints only become more real over time. And so, it is important, in my opinion, that we put this before the voters, and as Councilmember Weir stated, that we be very transparent about the reality and the fiscal situation that we're in. We lay all our cards on the table, and we let the voters decide where we move forward. I believe the voters, and at least in my ward, the constituents have many demands and requests, as well they should. They want a high-quality city with great parks and safe neighborhoods, and I think we all deserve that for our city. As we continue to grow, we want to also prosper. And so, it's important for us to lay that out and let the public decide. So, with that, I support the motion.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Excuse me, did you say it requires a 51% to pass, a simple majority?
50% plus one vote.
50% plus one, I see. Thank you.
Councilmember Parlier.
Thank you, Mayor. I agree with Councilman Weir's prior statements that CalPERS fiduciary responsibilities haven't been met. And I've had some people in the community say, well, just get out of PERS, you know, get out of PERS and that solves the problem. So, I asked staff, what would that look like? And the response that I got was that it would cost the city of Bakersfield approximately $1 billion and a half dollars to try and extricate itself out of PERS, and obviously, we don't have that kind of money. As Councilmember Sullivan stated, that it's an obligation, it's a bill that unfortunately we have to meet along with our other obligations and other bills. I want to ask the city manager if we continue this slow bleed over time with our total obligations, I mean, really, what are we facing? I mean, I know you've said it before and just kind of, you can give us a brief synopsis, but across the board, are we looking at a percentage of cuts? I mean, we're looking at something, I would think.
Councilmember Parlier, as you're aware, 62% of the general fund is public safety, and the lion's share of the $15 million we've cut out of the budget in the last four years as a result of the oil economy have been to the non-safety departments. So, they're a smaller piece of the pie, and we've already carved them up pretty badly. So, what's going to happen if we continue on our current path is service responses will get slower and slower. We don't save any money by leaving fire sworn positions vacant because fire is staffed based on either three or four firefighters per piece of equipment. And so, leaving their positions and their percentage of the budget doesn't save any money, unfortunately. The only way to save money on the fire department is to close a station, which would be rather traumatic to the surrounding neighborhood. So, that really leaves police, and we would start leaving police positions vacant and not fill them, and reduce the sworn complement from 407 down incrementally to a lower number and exacerbate the problems that we're currently experiencing in terms of the burglaries and the auto thefts and the other issues.
Well, I'm in line with some of my colleague's statements, and Councilman Gonzalez's that one of my number-one concerns of my constituents is public safety and police response times and what you articulated in your presentation too. You know, I look at the recent article in the Bakersfield Californian, it talked about the city, which would be a small microcosm, I guess, for us of California city when a local measure didn't pass and almost immediately they enacted pretty draconian measures to try and balance that budget. We're not in that position, but as we look down the road, you know, I'd hate for us to be in that position. So, I am in favor of putting this out to the voters and letting them make the decision. Thank you.
You have a motion? Please cast your votes.
Motion is approved with Councilmember Weir voting no.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next item, please.
Sorry, we can't take comments at this point, but you're free to talk to staff after that. I'm sorry, this is not the appropriate time, but staff, can you just go ahead and handle that and then let us know what the follow-up should be? Thank you. We certainly want to hear your comments, and Mr. Tellia will follow up with you. Thank you.
Madam Clerk?
Consent calendar items 8A through 8Z for approval.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilman Parlier has requested item W to be held from the consent calendar, and I haven't got any others. So, I would move to approve consent calendar items 8A through Z, excepting W.
You have a motion? Please cast your votes.
Motion is approved.
Thank you. Councilmember Weir, would you like to address? Oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Parlier, would you like to address this, please?
Well, Councilman Weir can, he can do it too.
It was W, Weir for W, right?
Yeah, Weir for W. Well, thank you, Mayor. This has to do with the police motorcycles, and I'm really glad to see that we're starting to make a little headway to bring this program back, starting with four motorcycles. At some point, I'd like to see that at least doubled. I think it can dramatically add to our pedestrian bike and vehicle safety efforts throughout the city. I know there's inherent dangers with motorcycles, but since we're buying a quality product from Bakersfield Harley-Davidson, I think we're in good hands. So, I move this item. Thank you.
You have a motion? Please cast your votes.
Motion is approved.
Next item, please.
Consent calendar public hearing items 9A through 9F for approval. Notices were mailed to the affected 93,066 residential and commercial property owners of record receiving refuse service from the city of Bakersfield regarding item 9B. The city clerk's office received correspondence protesting an increase in refuse rates for
It's now time for the consent calendar hearings. The purpose of this section is to vote on all of the items listed under consent calendar hearings in one motion without further comment. If anyone would like to speak on any of the hearing items listed, the item must be removed from this portion of the agenda. If an item is removed, it would be placed at the end of the regular public hearings portion of the meeting. At this time, I'll open consent calendar public hearing items 9A through F. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to request that a hearing item be removed from the consent calendar? If so, please come forward. This isn't the time to take testimony only to remove the matter from the consent calendar hearing.
Your Honor, thank you. My name is Jeff Hayward. I would like to ask that you remove item 9B for comments at the end.
Thank you, Mr. Hayward.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to have an item removed? Does any council member wish to remove an item from the consent calendar hearing? At this time, consent calendar public hearing items 9A and then 9C through F are now closed. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I would make a motion to approve consent calendar public hearing items 9A through F, excepting 9B.
You have a motion? Please cast your votes.
Motion is approved.
Thank you. Our next item is the public hearing. Before I open the public hearing, I'll go over the presentation time policy. Each side will be allowed 15 minutes. It's 15 minutes for all speakers, so it's important that you identify yourself, make your statement quickly so others may speak. We'll hear statements from those opposed to the staff recommendation, then we'll hear from those who would like to speak in favor of the staff recommendation. If there's testimony from both sides, each side will be allowed a five-minute rebuttal. There's a clock on the wall behind me which indicates 15 minutes. We'd ask you to step to the microphone, identify yourself. After 14 minutes, a yellow light will come on. At the end of the 15 minutes, a red light will flash indicating that your time is up, and we'd ask you to quickly end your statement. You may ask questions during your statement, but they won't be answered until the public hearing is closed. If you have written comments that are longer than your verbal statement, please give those to the clerk, and she'll provide copies to the council. Please be courteous to all who wish, others who wish to speak. Unless there's an approval by the majority of the city council, there's a strict 15-minute time limit for all those in favor or in opposition to staff's recommendation. So, please be concise, avoid repeating the remarks of the previous speakers. Madam Clerk, please read the first public hearing item.
Public hearing for the fiscal year 2018-19, operating and capital improvement program budgets.
Mr. Hewat.
Good evening once again, Honorable Mayor and City Councilmembers. Chris Hewat, City Manager's Office. Each year, a public hearing is required to receive public comment prior to the adoption of the budget. For fiscal year 1819, the proposed budget is $649 million, $649.1 million. That's comprised of an operating budget of $439.6 million and a capital improvement program budget of $209.5 million. The final adoption of the budget is scheduled for your June 20th council agenda, and with that, staff recommends the council hear any public testimony that there may be on the budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hewat. At this time, I'll open the public hearing. How many people would like to speak in opposition to staff's recommendation? Seeing none, is there anyone who wishes to speak in support or favor of staff's recommendation? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and return it to the council for comment and action. Vice Mayor.
We don't have action on this item 10, do we?
Mayor, Vice Mayor Smith, you are correct. It's just to accept whatever public testimony and since there wasn't any, I think we can then just leave it as is.
Right, thank you.
Thank you. So, now we're on to item 9B. So, at this time, I'll open the public hearing for 9B. How many people would like to speak in opposition to staff's recommendation? And actually, I think we'll have the city clerk read 9B first.
Public hearing to consider resolutions adopting refuse and recycling rates for fiscal year 2018-2019.
Thank you. So, how many people would like to speak in opposition to staff's recommendation? Seeing none, how many would like to speak in support of staff's recommendation? Please come forward.
Your Honor, council members, staff, thank you for allowing me opportunity. My name is Jeff Hayward. I'm the general manager for Solera at Kern Canyon, 558-unit common interest development made up of active adult seniors 55 and over. I'm neither here to oppose nor speak in favor of the $7 increase, but what I am trying to question is the letter that was sent out to the 93,000 people, which included the 558 residents at Solera. If I could read from this, the refuse rates changes will include tan trash container, green waste container, blue recycling container, bulky item collection, curbside motor collection, a free green waste drop-off, and street sweeping. As you're aware, common interest development Solera at Kern Canyon is a private community. They take care of and maintain their own roads, sidewalks, light posts, et cetera. We do, we are serviced by the Bakersfield Police Department, very fine job, by the way, and the Bakersfield Fire Department, as well as the current refuse providers. Where the issue arises is that you have a tax increase, yet you're not providing all the services for that tax increase. So, I'm asking the council or staff to figure out either, one, go ahead with the tax increase but provide street sweeping for the common interest development on the private roads, or not charge the Solera residents a $7 increase per year, and they'll still continue to provide the street sweeping services. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Hayward. Anyone else who would like to speak in support of staff's recommendation? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and return it to council for comment and action. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Staff, could you answer that question? We have many private developments in town that have that similar situation. What is the answer to that, please?
I could start, and then Mr. Fiddler may wish to jump in. Everybody has an access route that leads up to their neighborhood, whether their residential street is private or not. So, the arterial collector, the methodology of getting to the turnoff, which property owners have made a decision to privatize that they weren't required to do. Anyway, those streets are all swept. Nick, do you?
I concur with Mr. Tandy. Every street arterial collector which accesses those private communities are swept, so they are receiving the services for that. As part of the private development, they chose to make certain improvements within their facilities that don't meet city standards as well. So, city standards outside that private development, some of them being their curb types, could be different types of drainage systems. They've chose that mechanism as part of their development to have the gated communities. So, we are still providing the street sweeping services for all the other facilities that they utilize as well.
Thank you. With that, I would make motion to approve public hearing item 9B.
You have a motion? Please cast your votes. Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, there's Councilmember Rivera.
Sorry, Mayor, I was late to the game. So, and I don't know, I'm sure we don't have a crystal ball, and we can't really anticipate this, or maybe we can for the course of the next year, but we just finished a discussion about posing, you know, a question to the citizens of Bakersfield related to a sales tax increase. I'm not sure I'm comfortable in the interim raising any fees anywhere, given we might actually have a, I don't want to describe it as a windfall because I think it's much needed, but we might find ourselves with more revenue than we do currently, and I wonder whether or not it makes more sense to, you know, to delay or postpone fee increases such as this. So, I won't be supporting it, just wanted to clarify my position.
Thank you. Vice Mayor.
I would just respond to Councilman Rivera, and if the sales tax passes, it would not make any difference. This is an enterprise fund, and they have to be run as separate businesses, and so that they are not related at all.
Okay.
Anyone else? You have a motion? Please cast your votes. Just go ahead and...
Motion is approved, with Rivera voting no, and Freeman absent.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Council and Mayor's Statements.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to go back to, one of the first things was mentioned tonight, and that was the grant that we received today from the Federal Department of Transportation, $50 million, to help finish our freeway projects. Total, I believe, city manager said of $169 million we received in the last couple of months in total grants. And that is great news. We have, for years, thought we were going to borrow and pay for many years substantial amounts of money. I think it started out at $270 million, and that number is now zero. So, good work, staff, appreciated. I know we just got the news in the last couple of months, but I know you've been working and with Kern Cog, we've been working with them for a long, long time to make all that come, and it all came to fruition fairly closely. So, good work, and happy news for the city.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to quickly echo Vice Mayor Smith's comments. Just want to compliment the city manager's office, all of the team at the city, entire trip team, and all their great work, working on all the various trip projects. I'm very excited about us moving forward and having zero debt. So, congratulations.
Councilmember Parlier.
I just ask that somebody from Solid Ways could just stand by after the meeting for a second. I have some, just a few questions regarding some of the correspondence that we received. Thank you.
And I, too, want to echo the comments of our Vice Mayor and Councilmember Gonzalez. Congratulations. That takes a lot of work, it doesn't happen overnight, and that funding is going to be very helpful. So, thank you for all your efforts. Seeing that we have no other business, we are adjourned at 6:49.